I called the meeting door for the November 28th regular city council meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Now is the time for the invocation by Reverend Sadie Columber of Harbor Christian Church. Mayor Protem is going to graciously step in.
Lord, thank you for this gathering. Thank you for the ability to meet in safety. We thank you for the wisdom and gathered knowledge that you brought together. We ask that you bless us with the wisdom to actually make good decisions tonight. We thank you for the blessings that you've provided to this amazing city and our nation, and we ask you watch over those people who are suffering extraordinary strife abroad. Please watch over our military and our first responders in these things. We ask thy name. Amen.
Please join us all in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and each to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all other.
Madam Clerk, notice to the public.
The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
All right. So time, my favorite time, for council announcements or reports on committee activities and time for A1 items. Councilmember Kleiman.
None for me.
That's tough to find.
Councilmember Stapleton.
Yeah, I'll go with a few. I did attend the Oasis Thanksgiving Luncheon with my fellow council members, Robin Grant and Mayor Protem O'Neil. One of my favorite events of the year, getting to help with the Parks Department to serve those at Oasis. So that was a lot of fun. I also attended the Central Newport Annual Meeting with Lieutenant Corey Wolick. We spent a lot of time talking about boardwalk safety and other issues in Central Newport down on the peninsula, and that was a well-received and very entertaining. So that was good. And then finally, tomorrow evening, I'll be in the community room with Senator Janet Nguyen, Assemblywoman Diane Dixon, and Sheriff Don Barnes. We're doing a presentation on fentanyl that starts at 6:00. So if you're available, I would encourage you to attend. That's all.
Councilmember Grant.
Thank you. It was a great pleasure to participate in two important city events last week, serving the Thanksgiving Lunch at Oasis Senior Center and also recognizing the graduates of the Newport Beach Police Department Citizens Police Academy. I also want to recognize Public Works and the Orange County Waste and Recycling for last week's Free Shred, E-Waste, and Mulch Event. This is really a wonderful service for our residents. It's done several times during the year and a great way for us to repurpose our organic waste that's collected in our city. And last, I just want to inform all the residents that the OCTA has completed the 405 Improvement Project, and there'll be new lanes open on Friday, December 1st, both to widen the freeway and to provide new carpool opportunities, all this to lessen traffic and commute times, which is great for our community and the environment. Thank you.
Councilmember Wagon.
I don't have a report.
Councilmember Avery.
I have none.
Mayor Protem.
No, I'll pass two.
I'm rubbing off on people up here. Madam Clerk, please read the notice regarding public comments on consent calendar.
This is a time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 17. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommended in action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the City Council votes on the motion unless members of the City Council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Councilmember Kleiman, do you have any items to pull from consent or conflicts?
I do not have any items to pull. Number four, once again, I need to recuse myself to avoid any appearance of bias due to the work my spouse's company does.
Councilmember Stapleton.
Yeah, I'm going to recuse myself from item number 13 for proximity to primary residency, and then I'm going to ask respectively to be removed as a nominee for item number nine to the ad hoc committee due to some travel out of country. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wagon.
Yes, I will.
Councilmember Grant. That was.
None, thank you.
You know what, Eric?
Yes, I need to recuse on item number five due to receiving campaign contributions excess of $250.
Councilmember Avery.
None.
Mayor Protem.
I'll lodge a no vote on item number four.
And I have none myself.
All right. Yep. So with the amendments to item number one in our packet out front, lodging a no vote from me on number four and a recusal from Councilmember Kleiman, recusal from Councilmember Wagon on number five, an amendment on number nine removing Councilmember Stapleton, and item number 13 showing a recusal from Councilmember Stapleton, I move the balance, or I move the consent calendar.
Have a second on that? Second from Councilmember Stapleton.
May I ask just a quick question as far as the replacement of Councilmember Stapleton on the ad hoc? Will that be just a decision that we have to discuss, or is that something that the mayor can just do?
So it'd just be two unless you want to add a third person, and you should probably do it now since.
I was just going to go with the two. Perfect. Wonderful. Excellent. Do we add the first and the second? And let's go to public comment on consent calendar.
Mayor Blom, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher, and I would like to comment on the several ordinances that you are adopting in various consent calendar items tonight without any further discussion. Item number three, I would point out that the author of it seems to have not gotten the memo that in Newport Beach we apparently have people who are unable to read numbers like 1, 2, and 3 when they're spelled out in English, and they need those numbers to be repeated in parentheses with Arabic numerals. The author of this missed at least four opportunities to clutter up our municipal code with that. Item number four has to do with the tennis and pickleball club. The author of this seems to have missed the memo that at your meeting two weeks ago, you amended the general plan, but you did not include a hotel, and somehow this is saying there is a hotel there, but there's not supposed to be. Item number five, you will be unanimously declaring that you are making amendments to our housing rules to allow housing outside of the 65 decibel contour, and that's the reason you need to make these amendments, which is a little curious since that is already allowed. And then finally, I come to item number six, which is a massive amendment of the municipal code. I would note that this item is actually thicker than the entire agenda put together. So there's a lot you're doing here. I do not know entirely what you're doing with this. It's kind of like Obamacare. Apparently, you have to pass it to find out what's in it. I doubt that many of you know exactly what is in here. I pointed out in writing, it begins by instructing the city clerk to do something contrary to what our city charter tells her to do. It goes on to make changes to campaign contribution limits, which I had no idea was doing that. It's changing the cost of living adjustment, something that was carefully crafted just four years ago, replacing that with something that doesn't really work. And it's making recall elections. Somehow, the incumbent candidate is not limited to campaign contribution limits, but opponents or replacements for them are. Very strange things. And then in reading this, you can't really tell what it is because somebody is trying to abbreviate all the references to California government, California codes in here. So when you see something being changed, you don't know that it's something trivial like that or something substantive. Makes this impossible to read, and it makes us the only, as far as I can tell, city, county, or the state itself that in its law abbreviates things like that to, again, make it more difficult for the public to read our municipal code. I have no idea why you're doing this, and I think you should not. This is the second reading. You have an opportunity to vote no. I hope some of you will. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. May I comment on the consent calendar? Okay. Any additional council comments? Seeing none, let's take a vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance titles, the six ordinance titles for items 3 through 6. Ordinance 2023-17, adding section 17.60.045, short-term mooring licenses to chapter 17.60, harbor permits and leases of the Newport Beach Municipal Code Regarding Short-Term Mooring Licenses. Ordinance 2023-18, approving an amendment to the Newport Beach Country Club Plan Committee Development Plan, PC 47, for the tennis and pickleball club at Newport Beach located at 1602 East Coast Highway. Ordinance 2023-19, approving a development agreement for the tennis and pickleball club at Newport Beach located at 1602 East Coast Highway. Ordinance 2023-20, approving an amendment to Title 20, Planning and Zoning of the Newport Beach Municipal Code Related to Noise in the Airport Area Necessary to Implement the Six-Cycle Housing Element. Ordinance 2023-21, approving amendments to the Newport Place Plan Committee Development Plan, PC 11, and Newport Airport Village Plan Committee Development Plan, PC 60, related to noise in the airport area necessary to implement the Six-Cycle Housing Element. And ordinance 2023-22, adding, amending, and repealing various provisions of the Newport Beach Municipal Code. The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
I don't think she took a breath for that whole time, by the way. We now have public comments on non-agenda items. Anyone with a non-agenda? Wes, how are you? Good to see you.
Mayor Blom, city council, staff, and distinguished guests, it's my honor to be here tonight. I'm Wes Smith, Superintendent of the Newport Mesa Unified School District. One of our family traditions before we gorge ourselves, and clearly, I'm good at that. We go around the table and we give gratitude for something. Each of us has to do that. I want to continue that tonight. As superintendent, I've served in three different districts, five different cities. We work intentionally in each to make sure that we have positive relationships between the school district and the cities, and that's how students thrive. It's never worked as well as it's worked here in Newport Beach and Costa Mesa, and so tonight I want to share my gratitude for your city leadership. Our city manager is a gifted collaborator. She's honest, she's caring, and it's just a pleasure to work with her. Our chiefs here in this community are second to none. Chief Cartwright, we communicate regularly. You might remember, we had a tropical storm that was historic. Other school districts closed shop. We communicated, we worked hard. We opened every single classroom safely in this school district. Recently, we had an opportunity for community members to exercise their constitutional rights for freedom of assembly and speech. We also knew that we had to keep students safe. We worked around the clock over the weekend, and on that day during that demonstration, our kids were protected. So were the adults caring for them. That's a blessing to have that kind of cooperation. And then we have a program at Newport Harbor, and this is just one example, that serves 280 kids, it's award-winning nationally, state level, and our chief, Boyle, got involved to help us keep that classroom open so that 280 kids could continue to thrive. See, those are the kinds of relationships that make living, working, and learning in this community a blessing, and I just wanted to say thank you to all of you for your leadership.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments on non-agenda items? Okay. Everyone almost feels like it's December, don't they? The holiday already started. I like this. I'm not looking at you, Charles. Okay, we're going out to the public hearing here. Item 18, ordinance number 2023-23, and resolution number 2023-83, Newport Beach Municipal Code and Local Coastal Program Amendments Related to Short-Term Lodging. Oh, you know what, actually, I have a conflict regarding this item related to real property interest in the property located at 224 Marina Avenue. And we'll turn this matter over to the Mayor Protem.
Okay, let's go.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and city council members. Simone Jurdis, your Assistant City Manager, and with me on my right is Jaime Mariau, who's our Planning Manager. Tonight is an item regarding amending our short-term lodging ordinance. Mr. Mariau has a brief presentation. We'll go ahead and present that item, and then we'll answer your questions.
Thank you, Simone. Good evening, Mayor Protem, members of the council. These amendments really stemmed from direction we received from the City Council back in May of this year. The City Council provided direction to staff to work with the city's planning commission to identify and facilitate ways to accommodate visitor accommodations and our opportunities in the mixed-use W2 and mixed-use CV 15th Street mixed-use zoning districts. With that direction, there's a number of considerations that were provided to staff. Those included applicability to property owners with at least 20 or more units in their common ownership. There should be provisions for professional management, amenities provided, and that these opportunities don't result in any parking impacts to residential neighborhoods. And so with that direction, we held a study session with the planning commission in June. And really, the takeaway from that meeting was that within these two mixed-use zones, hotels, motels, bed and breakfasts, they're already permitted with the approval of conditional use permit, but what was missing was the ability to have short-term lodging. Short-term lodging used to be permitted in these mixed-use zones prior to the zoning code update in 2010, and so we felt that this was an opportunity to reintroduce short-term lodging in these mixed-use zones. The planning commission directed staff to return with proposed amendments, which we returned in October of this year. And we presented a program to allow for the expansion of short-term lodging in these mixed-use zones, which I'll get into in my slides. But there was one requirement that they did change, and that's the eligibility requirement of 20 or more units in their common ownership, and so I'll touch upon that in the next slide. But before you tonight, it's essentially three major amendments to our short-term lodging provisions. The first is really cleanup, and it's related to the definitions within our municipal code, transient is defined as 30 days or less. However, our code and definition for short-term lodging and bed and breakfast define those periods as less than 30 days, and so we're just cleaning that up for consistency. There's minor updates to the violation, suspension, revocation sections of the provisions. However, the major change there is related to inactive short-term lodging permits. So what we found is many permit holders have a permit but don't actually use the short-term rental privileges, and they're not collecting TOT. And so our code says after two years, if they haven't collected TOT, the city closes the permit, but they have the ability to request reinstatement, and that is unlimited, so they can continue doing that. And so part of this change is to change that to a one-time reinstatement, and that'll help free up those permits for those that are on the waiting list. And then lastly, the major part of this amendment is to allow the short-term rentals in those two identified mixed-use districts. This is a map of the two identified mixed-use districts. These areas are mostly located in Lidl Marina Village, Cannery Village, McFadden Square, two mixed-use blocks within Babo Island, and then a small block on 15th Street. Generally, these are in areas where, you know, visitors still want to be and rent short-term lodging units, they're close to the beach, they're close to the harbor. But the benefit is they're outside the residential districts, and so residential units in these areas are already used to having, being mixed with commercial uses. Part of the change is we want to maintain the overall 1,550 cap we have for permits. That's really important. We worked hard to get that approved by the California Coastal Commission. So in order to allow for the expansion of these permits in the mixed-use zones, what we've proposed is to have two separate caps now. So there'd be a cap within the mixed-use districts with a maximum cap of 75 permits, and then a separate cap in the residential districts with 1,475 permits. So for a total of 1,550, maintaining that cap, but they'd be completely separate caps with two separate waiting lists. And so in order to get a permit in the residential district, if you're on the waiting list, you'd have to wait until it gets down below that 1,475. But if there's permits available in the mixed-use districts and you have an eligible property, you'd be able to obtain a permit right away. Part of the program would be to ensure that there's a management plan. They would have to submit for the approval of the director, and part of that is to ensure that they acknowledge compliance with the operational standards and the eligibility requirements. They have to demonstrate they have adequate onsite amenities, and they might be different for the type of project. There might be like a larger complex, which might have a pool or like a gym onsite, but some of these might be individual units or apartments, in which case they may provide, you know, bicycle rentals or equipment to go to the beach. And so the type of amenities, it's not prescriptive, it's flexible, but that would be to the review of our director. And then lastly, they'd have to include a parking management plan that ensures all parking available, is free and clear to obstructions, available for the use by their tenants. If the property they're proposing is non-conforming due to a number of spaces, they have to identify how impacts are going to be minimized and mitigated. And so it might be location next to a bus stop or near a public parking lot, or show that the demand is less than our code requires. And then lastly, in terms of eligibility, what we originally proposed and, you know, taking into account the direction we received from council, was that permit holders would have to own at least 20 or more units in the same, and what we added was same statistical areas. So within the city, in our general plan, we break up neighborhoods into statistical areas, and what we felt was that ensuring that a permit holder has 20 more units helps us with accountability and building that relationship with the operator. So if there is problems, it's easier to deal with one operator versus multiple individual, you know, homeowners. And so that is in the recommendation today, we do have the recommendation from the planning commission, we have an alternative resolution that includes eligibility requirement should the council choose to add that. And lastly, I just want to talk about our code enforcement program. We did receive some comments, and I just did want to add that it is a robust program, but it is reactive. We do have a 24-hour hotline, the number's on the slide. So each permit holder is responsible for identifying contact that is able to respond within 30 minutes of receiving a complaint. If a call comes into the hotline, we'll contact the contact on the permit, but also code enforcement responds when you get a complaint filed. And we have a number of citations. The citations are much higher for short-term lodging, and they're progressively higher. So the first citation's $1,000, the second's $2,000, and the third is $3,000. And that concludes my presentation. Again, the recommended action is to introduce the ordinance affecting the changes to chapter 5.95 in our zoning code entitled 20, and then the council has the option of adopting resolution either as recommended by the planning commission without the 20-unit eligibility requirement, and that would be attachment B in your staff report, or include that alternative language, which adds back that 20-unit eligibility requirement, and that's attachment K in your staff report. And lastly, because this does affect our LCP, we will have to submit this amendment to the California Coastal Commission for their review and approval, and then we bring it back to the city council for full adoption and implementation.
Yeah, could you go back a couple of slides? So, there you go. So, real quick, I appreciate what the planning commission was thinking, the discussion they had, and ultimately kind of where they got. When I put this on for A1, I specifically used the idea of 20 or more units in the area because the idea is not to expand out too far. The idea is to draw out permits into more commercial areas than residential, and by allowing it for one unit instead of 20, it expands out farther than I would prefer, which is why that was the original thought on the A1. So I'm open to being convinced otherwise, but my intention would be, when this gets brought back, my intention would be to make a motion that incorporates the alternative language to be at 20 as opposed to the recommendation of one. So, anyway, any other questions or comments before we go to public comment? Okay, let's go to public comment on this item. Do we have any public comments?
Good evening, Mayor Protem and members of the city council. My name is Charles Klob. As you know, I'm the current president of SPAWN. We were deeply involved in informing the public when the STL ordinance was approved. We supported the LCP amendment at the Coastal Commission, and we generally approve of trading STLs in residential neighborhoods for mixed-use and commercial areas. We do not support the method that's being recommended today, that there will be an immediate increase in STLs, and there will likely be years-long decrease in them in residential neighborhoods. Also, we see no reason that this needs to be decided today, and suggest that it be sent back with a council committee forum to better suggest a comprehensive plan to accommodate the desired change. When the planning commission considered this, they had no idea what direction you were asking, as the A1 item never came to this council for clear direction to the unsuspecting planning commission, and we support Mayor Protem's position on the minimum 20 units. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public speakers?
Mayor Protem O'Neil, members of the city council, my name is Jim Mosher. I tried to read this this afternoon, found enough problems in it that I wish I had put them in writing. I didn't have the time, and I won't be able to explain them all to you here. Overall, I do not understand what is special about these two particular mixed-use areas. Why, if it's good for these mixed-use areas and the concept of moving them from residential areas into those is a good idea, why would we not apply it to all of the mixed-use areas in Newport Beach, including specifically the Mariners Mile mixed-use area, which is very similar to these two? I have no idea why that is being left out. I have no idea why they're giving a separate cap on their number. I don't understand about the 20 units. The direction in the A1 item was for projects, for developments with 20 or more units, not for somebody who owns 20 or more units scattered over a statistical area or any other geographic area. Why those people would be any better proprietors of one short-term lodging permit than anybody else, I have no idea. So there's much I don't understand about this, there's much that's wrong about this. So I am looking here at page 18-82, which is the red line explaining about the maximum number of permits. My understanding is that the 1,550 currently applies to all short-term logic permits in the city, including those that were grandfathered in in areas where they're not currently allowed. That's my understanding. That's the way it currently read in the first paragraph here, which is numbered A. However, if you look at paragraph B, it's saying that the, we are not going to count. First, we're going to count residential ones towards one cap, and then we're going to count ones in mixed-use areas toward a second cap, but within those areas, and oddly, it says mixed-use coastal zoning districts. So apparently, that's including all 24 permits that are in mixed-use districts anywhere. Those will no longer count towards that second cap, and because they're not in residential areas, they won't count towards the first cap. So we now have 24 permits that don't count towards either cap. So we're apparently raising the cap from 1,550 to 1,570 or possibly 1,574. I think that's a misprint. Well, it's not a misprint, that that's unintentional. Maybe it's not unintentional, I don't know, but it's contrary to what we heard, that we're not changing the cap. It is going up, and then in the first paragraph, if you compare it to the second, you'll see it's written about the cap. It's saying that you will not issue any new permits until the total number does not exceed 1,475. It's supposed to say until the number is less than. The number 1,475 does not exceed, so if it was at that number, you would be issuing them. Anyway, there's so much wrong with this page, I can't explain it to you. I don't think this is ready for primetime. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next speaker, please.
Mayor, council members, Denise Oberman, resident in the district, that is the victim of the short-term lodging conundrum that we find ourselves in as a city. I submitted a letter on behalf of a working group that was established of residents in the coastal zones districts initially to address the issue of timeshares and fractional ownership. Conceptually, we all are in favor of having vacation-serving uses in the city, and particularly in favor of a well-thought-out plan to transition the more of those uses into the mixed-use and commercial districts, not only the target ones as specified here, but as Jim Mosher and commercial districts, not only the target ones as specified here, but as Jim Moser suggested throughout the city. What we have difficulty understanding, and really, we don't see the feasibility of being able to hold either individually or collectively at a maximum cap under the current scheme as it's presented. So there isn't a specific plan to reduce the number of STL permits in residential areas. While you could say, as staff did, it's going to take quite a long while, I really don't think that that provides an equitable resolution for the community. We have a situation where there's a significant concentration of permitted and unpermitted short-term lodging units in the residential zones. And it does not appear mechanically, based on interviews with staff in community development, code enforcement, and revenue departments, that there is a definitive way that we can reduce the number of STL permitted units to correspond in the timeline with when it's proposed and anticipated to increase the units in the mixed-use areas. So, the concern is that this really becomes additive. As staff pointed out in its reports, and as confirmed in revenue, we have something anywhere in the neighborhood from 514 to 546 people on the waiting list. The proposed ordinance doesn't really make it clear how those, how those units are going to be bled down. What we did learn in interviewing primarily with senior staff in the revenue area, is that there, as there are permits that are revoked, or revoked and appealed and closed, then they are made available to others on the waiting list. Well, if we have a waiting list that's clearly in excess of 500 people, how do those, how do those get released? I mean, they, staff indicates, and the ordinance indicates, that they get released according to the seniority, if you will, in waiting. So first in line gets access to an available permit first. Long-winded story, 30 seconds, please.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I do support the need to look at this more carefully and to, and to really understand what the practices are in the administration of the current STL permitting program. Is there something that we need to do, and that we would want to do as a city, to make that program more effective and ensure the reduction of those units at the same time that we are increasing the number of units? And lastly, Mayor Protem, I will text you the site from the ordinance that you were looking for, both of you.
Yeah, probably better to email me with, yeah, email me with the city attorney. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem and members of the council. My name's Nancy Scarborough. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss this short-term lodging ordinance. Again, as you've heard from some of the earlier speakers, myself included, we seem to agree that mixed-use, STLs in mixed-use areas are preferable to in residential zones. It seems more appropriate. Even in the 2020 ordinance, the STLs continue to pose a problem in the residential neighborhoods. The quality of life for Newport Beach residents really should be the primary focus for all of our decisions. My concern is the increase in the number of permits and the potentially long wait for this to get back to the cap of 1550 through attrition, to reduce the cap back down to our ordinance, or in this case, 1,475 now for residential. I just don't see that happening very quickly. I think it could take years, you know, five, 10 years. I'd like to suggest that they, this might be a time to review the entire ordinance and possibly discuss how we could modify this and alleviate some of the residents' concerns. Among the issues that could be discussed are permits not following the land, and allowing those to be renewed annually and reverting to the city if they are not renewed, or if they're not eligible for renewal. This would actually help in the attrition. More robust, proactive enforcement and loss of permit after a second infraction of the permit, also allowing faster attrition. Permits should not be granted, or should be granted with a priority to residents of Newport Beach, who have a primary residence in the city, or owners of properties who have considerable capital investments. And STL permits possibly being reduced to 750 to 1,000 in the residential zones. The Coastal Commission hinted at this at the last hearing that we had for FHO's fractional home ownership. They were aghast at the number of units we had in STLs and FHOs that took housing stock out of our residential neighborhoods. Last, but maybe the most important thing is we have 53 new laws that were passed in 2023 dealing with housing, and we have 82 two-year bills coming up in 2024 that might impact this in terms of lot splits, reduced parking, and a variety of other concessions that are allowed for housing that might affect these units. So I would like to think that we would review those things in light of this and possibly just revisit this whole thing. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration of this.
Thank you. Any other speakers? All right, bring it back up. Mr. Harp, all right, sorry. Come on up. If you're going to speak, come on up, so I know you're here. All right, you're going to be the last speaker. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. My name's Russell Adnoff. I own and operate a large number of residential vacation rentals on the peninsula, and so henceforth can be known as public enemy number one. It's a, we're concerned that only after three years of implementing a cap, that we are already discussing a 5% cut to the cap in the residential area. If I'm understanding this correctly, we are creating now two types of industry in the form of mixed-use and then residential zoning. I've heard from this council or members of the council that the cap created distortions in the marketplace when it came to the buying and selling of real estate. So I can't help but feel like there's a vested interest to be able to develop, build, and sell permitted units in these specific areas. California Coastal Commission, their agenda is to provide affordable access to the coast. And if you have to submit for this proposal, why not submit increasing the cap to allow whatever you need to do to build in these areas? Ultimately, we're concerned, like, what protections are going to keep from pulling from the remaining 1,475? I have a job to protect this industry. The inactive units are going to continue to get weeded out, but again, as people have stated, there is a very substantial waitlist already. And I think that those people need to be respected, and it's going to take that much longer to get them. I just request that the short-term lodging is treated equally. If there's a cap of 1550, let it be a cap for any and all short-term lodging. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, bring it back up. To the last speaker, you're right, we have a preference for pulling short-term lodging permits out of residential. I don't, I'm not, sorry about that. That's, I think, abundantly clear. Mr. Harp, to Denise's point about how the, how the process works to draw down on the, on the cap, and then replace it with, replace it with permit, requested permits off of the...
Waitlist.
Yeah, off the waitlist. One of the points made in the letter that was sent in was that, that it seems that those, that the items are being pulled off the waitlist without regard for the cap. I didn't, that's not how I've read our code, so I wanted to make sure that that was abundantly, that was, that I'm right on that.
You're absolutely correct.
Okay. And then I'm not sure who the interviews were conducted with, but it might be worth just making sure that directors are clear on how this works, so that folks in revenue are as well. I suspect they are, but I wanted to make sure we're coordinating on that. And then to Mr. Mosher's point, I don't think we're going to be including Mariners Mile on our discussions tonight. We'll go with Ms. Grant first. Councilmember Grant.
Thank you. So our city has grappled with the short-term lodging and its impact on our residential communities for a lot of years, and there have been revisions over the years to how we address this. To be sure, there's a lot of very well-managed properties throughout the city, and we welcome those very well-managed properties. But there are properties that are negatively affecting our residents there, and, you know, with respect to parking and trash and noise. And so this is, you know, a constant sort of give and take and struggle to manage properly and make sure that the residents and the businesses are working together effectively. This particular revision, I think, accomplishes a lot in advancing what I think is the primary responsibility of this body, and that is to protect the quality of life of our residents, and to make sure that we have proper business administration in our city. In particular, I'm talking about, you know, several critical milestones that we're going to meet with this. That includes congregating the short-term lodging in commercial and visitor-serving districts. That's helpful, as opposed to this spattered approach that greatly impacts all of our residential areas in the city. So we can avoid the community impacts to the residents with this congregation. I am in favor, generally, of lowering the cap. I agree with the Coastal Commission that we have a very high cap in this city. You know, when you compare it to other cities in the county or even across the state, I think that we do have a high cap. We, you know, we're working to find the sweet spot with this, and there was a lot of work that was put in several years ago to accomplishing what we have now. But this refinement, I think, is going to benefit what we already have. And then finally, I do think that the one-time allowance for reinstating a permit is sufficient. One thing we do want to do is weed out the bad operators. And if there's people who are operating without paying the proper fees without a permit, or continually violating the residential character of our neighborhoods, that needs to be taken care of proactively, especially, you know, when we're talking about proactive versus reactive enforcement. The one thing that we definitely are proactive on is collecting our TOTs. And I think that that's something that we, especially with the appeal process, we, you know, we can't just be waiting for people to not pay, then appeal, then get it back, then not pay and appeal. That certainly isn't the way we operate this city. You know, our financial, you know, status is not, should not be based on people just sort of violating our laws and then being reinstated. So I think in accomplishing at least those three goals, this is, you know, a step forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stapleton.
Yeah, I want to start by thanking Mayor Protem O'Neill for bringing this item to our attention. And I want to thank staff for all your hard work on this, and especially our residents. I heard from a lot of you, and I appreciate your feedback. I think we're all on the same team here. There's no doubt, I wasn't involved in the 2010 discussion with STLs when it came to the code and what's going forward. The reality is that I'm all in favor of removing short-term lodging from residential areas and stopping the commercialization of our neighborhoods. There's got to be a balance, right? There has to be an opportunity for people to come visit, especially in a district like District One, where we have ocean, easy ocean access. I'm all in favor of that as well. But there's got to be an opportunity where if we could remove 75, 75 units and put it where I think it's most appropriate in these mixed-use areas, I'm going to be all in favor of that. So I want to begin with that, and then also, you know, talk about, I'm certainly in favor of property owners with 20 or more units, not, not one that came through Planning Commission, but certainly will focus on the 20. And then I see this as a pilot program. I see this as an opportunity to see how this works, see how we can remove these units from residential neighborhoods, put them in mixed-use and, and review. And I couldn't agree more with Councilwoman Grant as far as enforcement. I think there's going to be some opportunities with this, if this does go through, we will have an increase in TOT. We have an increase in sales tax potentially. So I think there's an opportunity to look in the future and see what enforcement would look like with some increased revenue. And those are my comments.
Councilmember Kleiman.
Yeah, I want to start as well by thanking staff, Jaime in particular. I know how much time you invested in this, so thank you. I think this is a completely compatible use in these zoning areas, which invites reinvestment, much needed, and offers some relief for the residential zones, as we've already kind of heard from other council members about. It also allows for better, more accountable operators, which I think we're also in need of. Since we're talking about making changes to this code section, I do have some questions from staff on just our short-term lodging practices in the city overall. If you can kind of bear with me. So first question is, how much we charge for a short-term lodging permit?
So new permits are $175, and those apply to those on the waiting list or for transfers, if there's a transfer of permit. And then we do annual renewals, which is $92.
And then how much approximately is the revenue to the city on an annual basis, including TOT?
Based on the revenue, the annual revenue charges, we're collecting approximately $92,000 a year. And then for the TOT revenue, it's approximately $10 million that's projected for this year.
Thank you. And then, do we have an idea of kind of what it costs us to administer these permits annually, including monitoring and enforcing?
Yeah, I don't have an actual cost, but within the revenue division, we do have one part-time staff that's fully devoted to managing and issuing short-term lodging permits. Our revenue division's management assistant also supervises that staff member and spends approximately, I would say, 25% of his time. And then within the code enforcement division, I would say on a yearly basis, it's about 5% of code enforcement's time.
Okay, that's helpful. And then at this point, how many permits have been revoked, suspended, or closed?
So total, for 2023, we've revoked a total of three permits. We've suspended four permits, and we've closed due to inactivity approximately 25 permits. In addition, we've investigated 196 cases of violations and have issued a total of 58 citations.
Okay. And so, do we look at calls for service and potential or past violations while we're looking to renew permits before we rubber stamp that?
Yeah, so we do have a tracking program. So before we renew a permit or issue a new permit, we do look for any existing violations or past violations, any outstanding fines or fees that are due to the city. So we do keep track of all that.
Great. Okay. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Avery.
Thank you. So permit is returned, they get, if they voluntarily just give it up, they have one, a one-time right to come back and reestablish that permit. Is that correct?
So currently, staff will close a permit if we identify that they haven't paid any TOT for a period of two years, and we provide a notice to that permit holder. Then they have, I believe it's 30 or 60 days, 30, to request reinstatement of that permit. So right now, it's unlimited, and they can just continue doing that, hold that permit without collecting any TOT. And so part of this amendment is to limit them to a one-time reinstatement. After that, their permit would be deemed abandoned.
And that would be reinstatement through, or, so there's a couple of ways you could lose your permit if you don't stay active, or if you've got enough code violations where that becomes the penalty. Is that right?
Correct.
Yep. Great. And so it's, then there's a limited amount of time for them to come back.
Correct. It'd be 30 days to...
30 days. Great.
And then they would have two years to...
Right.
Try to collect TOT.
And the fines, the 1,000, 2,000, 3,000 escalating fines, is that new, or has that been on the books for a while?
We increased those fines...
2020.
2020.
Yep. So I think the fines, I don't know if those are appropriate numbers or not, but I completely, I think it's important to levy significant fines when we've got violations, you know, especially repeat violations. So that's, that's helpful. And like everybody else up here, we're, everybody's, we're protecting neighborhoods. And I think this is, in concept, great in terms of trying to gradually move into these, into these more commercial areas, mixed-use areas, and give some relief to homeowners who are being impacted by this. So as someone said earlier, it's really about balancing it out. You know, we have a real obligation to not oversaturate the city with, with STLs, I believe, but it's, everyone's got a different opinion of what oversaturation would be. but it's, everyone's got a different opinion of what oversaturation would be. You know, the new zones are particularly active areas. There's virtually no parking anywhere, so it's probably going to increase some of those things, but that's kind of what all beach communities are faced with, so it's no different. But I think it does, it will increase, you know, sort of the impacts, if you will, of having a lot of visitors in a very concentrated area, which we already have, so it's just stepping, in my view, stepping it up a little bit. And so, that just speaks to obviously having robust code enforcement, and, you know, maybe we add a couple more people since we're getting, I think, one of the, we're getting this income, the city's getting this income, but I think we shouldn't hesitate to spend money to protect residents, but not only residents, but people who are peacefully enjoying their STL from their next-door neighbor who's got an STL that's having a frat party or something. So, I know we're reactive, but sometimes it's difficult to actually get there in time, and, you know, it's just like, when the police show up, the party's kind of winding down, so, and they've got other things to do on a Saturday night. So, that's why our code enforcement is so important, and of course, they're not being taken away by, like, the police are, if they get a more significant call. So, hopefully, you know, I just think we have an obligation to make sure we've got enough folks to answer people's calls, complaints in a speedy manner and give relief to folks, because we're sort of creating this thing. We've sort of created it, so we have an obligation to manage it from that perspective. I think otherwise, I'm good with the plan, but if we can get some STLs out of residential areas, that's good. My only, the only other downside of this is, in my years of living on the peninsula, there's so many small apartments where people live, and that, it kind of, it was more or less affordable housing. One-bedroom units, two-bedroom units on Bay Avenue, below Newport Harbor Yacht Club, there's a bunch of small little units that people lived in for years. I don't know if those have been converted to STLs at this point or not, but it'd just be nice to kind of keep that mix of, you know, people who are living there as permanent renters, if you will, as opposed to all of it being STL. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kleiman.
Yeah, if there's no further discussion, I'll go ahead and move staff's recommendation, not the Planning Commission's recommendation, but staff's recommendation, and request, if I can, that staff come back to us in the new year to look at our short-term lodging permit fees and fines in comparison to similar cities, as well as present some kind of a proposal on allocation of short-term lodging revenue to dedicated proactive code enforcement efforts for commercial operations in residential neighborhoods.
So, we can split off the second half of that because that'll actually be part of our planning session that we'll have at Oasis in January.
Can we get a consensus or a straw vote on the second half of that? It sounds like we kind of have that.
To bring it back.
Yeah, to bring it back.
It's literally coming.
The whole piece of it?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, that whole piece. We're going to be having this discussion at the planning session in January.
Just the code enforcement piece?
Yeah, but we can include the discussion about the fees as well. That's not a problem.
Got it.
Okay. So, we'll just take the first half of that motion on the staff recommendation. Do I have a second? All right. Second by Councilmember Stapleton. Let's go ahead and vote.
All right, reading the vote, I read the ordinance, Title IV, Ordinance 2023-23, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach approving a code amendment to Chapter 5.95, short-term lodging, and Title 20, planning and zoning of the Newport Beach Municipal Code related to short-term lodging. The motion carries 6-0.
Item 19, Resolution 2023-84, adopting a new salary range and adjusting base salary for the city clerk. Before we get to the staff report, I want to note for the record that the city clerk will be recusing herself based upon possible impact of this item on her personal finances. That is great. Hello, Barbara, do we need a...
Yes, the law requires...
We do. We all, the law, thank you, I like those ones, this is my favorite.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Barbara Salvini. I'm the Human Resources Director. The matter before you tonight proposes a change to the city clerk's compensation, so under the law, a presentation is required. The staff report proposes a 5% adjustment to the base salary for the city clerk that would go into effect December 2nd. A resolution accompanies the staff report because the current salary range of the city clerk would not accommodate that 5% base salary adjustment. So, if the matter is approved tonight, the salary range would adjust to $120,288 for the lower end of the range to a maximum of $180,419. And that is all my script has for me tonight, but I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them. Pretty straightforward.
Wonderful. Do we have any comments up here? Seeing none? Wonderful. Let's go out to public comment on this. Any public comments on this item? Seeing none, okay. Do we have a motion and a second on this?
I'll move staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Yeah. Good motion by Mayor Protam, and a second by Councilmember Grant. Let's go ahead and vote.
Motion carries 6-0.
Wonderful. Item 20, Appointment to the Board of Library Trustees to fill an unscheduled vacancy. Do we have a...
In order to be nominated, the appointee must receive at least four votes.
Excellent. Do we have any comments up here? None? Let's go out to public comment on this item. Seeing no public climate, let's proceed with the vote tally.
Councilmember Grant voted for Chase Reeve. Councilmember Kleiman, Chase Reeve. Councilmember Wigan, Chase Reeve. Councilmember Avery, Chase Reeve. Mayor Protam O'Neill, Chase Reeve. And Mayor Blom, Chase Reeve. That's seven votes.
Well, congratulations, Chase, and thank you to everyone who applied on this one. Madam Clerk, please read the announcement for motions for reconsideration.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the City Council, either this meeting or the previous meeting, may be made only by one of the council members who voted with a prevailing side.
Are there any motions for reconsideration? Seeing none. Tonight, we're adjourning in memory of Peter Sabatino. Peter passed away, longtime Newport Beach resident who was a restaurateur at the age of 82. Peter was a beloved founder and owner of Sabatino Sausage Company, also known as the Lido Shipyard Sausage Company. He was born in Chicago, where the original Sabatino family is located, or family restaurant is located. He came to California through his service in the Marine Corps. He started Sabatino's nearly 35 years ago using a unique sausage recipe created by the family in Sicily dating back to the 1860s. He became ill in 2022. He passed recently. His son, Jimmy, has been operating Sabatino's and keeping the family legacy alive. And now, LaSane Sebastian, you're doing that. Councilmember Grant?
Yes, tonight, we adjourn in the memory of LaSane Marie Sebastian, beloved wife, daughter, sister, and dedicated teacher who passed away in October at the age of 50. She survived by a large, loving family, including her husband, Rick Sebastian, their two children, Brady and Sage, her parents, Janet and James Walkie Ray. LaSane graduated from Coronel Amar High School in 1991 and went on to earn a bachelor's degree in marine science from the University of San Diego and a teaching credential from Pepperdine University. She taught science, technology, engineering, and math over her career at our local schools and made science an engaging and fun subject for countless students in our community. LaSane was a talented athlete and natural swimmer who was accepted to the Junior Olympic Swim Team. She was a varsity rower in college and went on to a lifelong love of Hawaiian outrigger canoe racing, where she found her ohana. LaSane joined her family in supporting countless community projects, including the Discovery Science Center, the Orange County High School of the Arts, Hope Hospital, and many, many more. Her dedication to these causes was an inspiration to all who knew her. LaSane will be deeply missed by family, friends, students, and all who had the privilege of knowing her. She leaves behind a legacy that will continue to inspire those whose lives she touched.
Thank you. We are adjourned.